Me earlier, I'm sorry. Stuart pointed out to me earlier that they really weren't eliminated. Instead of having SOLs, we know in these, for these five subject areas, we have local assessments and instructional services is working closely with schools to encourage those to be performance-based. We also have this year the computer adaptive test at grade six. Expedited retakes for grades three through eight were introduced this year for the first time. And as the Department of Education went through looking at results and the unintended consequences of eliminating some of the tests, then they will use a four-year average in some of the accreditation calculations rather than the three-year average. They'll use a four-year average in those areas where tests were eliminated. When we ask the question, which students are included, basically the answer to that is all students. There are some exemptions for English language learners even though, even though in general we expect that they'll all be assessed. And those exemptions include the ones that are listed here. If a student has been in the U.S. for less than 12 months, they can receive a one-time exemption on the SOL reading test in grades three through eight. And then there are other exemptions for LEP students which are not related to how long they've been in the States, they're related to what grade level they're at. The same is true with students with disabilities. All students are expected to participate. But then when we ask what assessments are available, I think we tend to think that every student sits down with the same assessment and that it's the online typical SOL. These next two slides are only just to show that there are many options for our students from the portfolios, the collections of evidence, all the way up through, you know, plain English exams or the regular SOL tests that most of our students take. In terms of accommodations, we also have a lot of accommodations, but as much as possible, the assessment situation is supposed to mirror the situation in which the students are instructed. So if they get certain accommodations during instruction, those accommodations are oftentimes allowed on the test. And there are accommodations for both LEP and students with disabilities, and they include such things as bilingual dictionaries, large print and Braille, read aloud or audio tests. And they're, as I said earlier, they're supposed to mirror how the students are being instructed. This year, in the, just the spring window, we have testing windows that go all year long, especially at the high school level. But just in the spring level, we gave 356,133 SOL tests. That number includes paper and pencil tests. There were just over 3,000 paper and pencil tests. So our paper and pencil tests these days are less than 1% of the total tests that are administered. The V tests are the portfolios of, or the collections of evidence, the Virginia Grade Level Alternative, the VAP and the VSAP, they're listed here. And you can see that the numbers of those tests are small, but they're important for the students who are eligible to be assessed with a collection of evidence. We hear a lot these days about student and parent refusals, but if you look at our numbers, they're extremely small. We had 21 out of this 350-plus thousand tests that were refused by students and 117 that were refused by parents. If a parent refuses, they usually refuse for all tests that the student was supposed to take. So this number, when it talks about the number of students, it's even less. We probably only have 50 or 60 students whose parents refused their taking the SOL tests. We had a lot of people concerned this year about the new computer adaptive test. At sixth grade, the computer adaptive test, the students all answered the same number of questions, but they don't answer the same questions. And so a student starts the test. If he gets the item wrong, then he takes a slightly easier item. If he gets the item right, he takes a slightly more difficult item. We were very pleased with the pass rates. The pass rates on the grade six computer adaptive test are higher than we've seen in the other grade levels and also when we compare them with last year's pass rates. And I should have said this when we started, but we've updated these, the numbers slightly from what was first posted for you all. These are more current. This is based on data as of July 7th. Almost 50% of the expedited retakes in grades three through eight resulted in the student score changing from a failing score to a passing score. Anecdotally, we heard, especially at the third grade level, that many students who were taking an SOL for the first time were apprehensive about doing that. When they sat down the second time, they knew more what to expect and many of them passed. And if you remember, the expedited retakes were for those students who failed by a narrow margin. The, a passing score is 400, and if they got initially a score 375 to 399, they were eligible for an expedited retake.
And that's the difference of about four, on average, about four questions, is that correct? So these are only for students that missed about four questions or were four questions short of passing?
Fifty or 60, yeah. And in some instances, it would, it could have been one or two questions, you know, depending on the particular test. I have here a comparison between accreditation and accountability, but I think most of you are aware of that. We're talking about accreditation today. English, the benchmark is 75% or higher passing. For math, science, and history, it's 70%. Same is true at the high school level, but the high school also has to meet a benchmark for graduation and completion index of 85 points or more. This is a list from last year. This is the, we had 17 schools that were accredited with warning last year. Approximately half of them were in the second year of being accredited with warning. These are our predictions for this year, and this slide was not in the first version of this presentation that you received. The middle column is their status for 2014-15 based on their 2013-14 results. A dash means that they weren't accredited with warning last year. And you can see that we have just four schools. At the moment, these are only predictions, remember, I have to emphasize that. But we have four schools that we're predicting will be in year three of being accredited with warning. And if they were to go into four years of being accredited with warning, then accreditation would be denied and there would be other requirements.
I'd like to talk, go ahead.
Those four schools are Lynbrook, Mount Vernon High, Mount Vernon Woods Elementary, they're the ones that are enrolled. And for Stuart High School, Stuart High School last year was accredited with warning in math, and they didn't reach the number of points they needed for the graduation and completion index. They're still listed here, but it's only based on the, we don't know yet the results for the GCI. They did meet the benchmark for math this year, so they may possibly go off. And Mount Vernon High had some errors in their coding from last summer and from the fall. And Dr. Garza signed a form to ask the state to allow them to go back and correct those errors. So there's a chance also for Mount Vernon High to come off this list, but it depends on the corrections in their coding, and we hope.
Yeah, I was just going to emphasize, Kathy, this is still pretty early in this process. We're not comparing this to the same time last year. Our list was a lot longer than what it ended up being. Mount Vernon High School, for an example, I think it's going to be close, potentially down to very few students, maybe one or two. So, I mean, it's that close. So this is just preliminary, our best thinking, best guess as it relates to right now, but it could definitely change. I will tell you, you'll see their science, the elimination, even though they went to a four-year average, the elimination of the third grade science was, made it very difficult for a lot of our schools, elementary schools particularly, to make it. It's something we're really going to have to work on this next year is making sure that we're teaching science in the way which, you know, not, I know some of these schools are really focused on reading, language arts, and mathematics, right? You'll see also, we have, in some cases, some new leadership in some of these same schools. We won't go into that today, but some of you know about those. So it's still very preliminary, but we wanted to give you our best thinking at this juncture, and maybe sometime in September is when we'll have the final.
Yes, I always hate to make the predictions public because I often think that people only remember the first thing that we've said about a school. You know, we've got like Mount Vernon High and Stuart High up on this list right now. They may come off this list, but people tend to remember what they, what they heard the first, the first time. And this is similar to the slide before where I showed the, what the status was last year. The green schools on this list are the ones that we are predicting will no longer be accredited with warning. So we have Bailey's, Bucknell, Hutchison, Washington Mill, and West Potomac, which we are predicting will no longer be accredited with warning, and three of those are, were in year two. So it shows some dramatic work that was done.
Move to accredited?
Pardon? Move to fully accredited, yes. And as we said, on August 11th, VDOE will release unadjusted pass rates. They won't be federal accountability or accreditation pass rates. They'll just be straight unadjusted pass rates. Prior to August 11th, they'll make them available to school divisions for us to check. But it won't be until September when we have the actual state accreditation ratings and the federal accountability determinations. And we've already been getting lots of questions about focus schools, but we can't even predict those. We can predict accountability pass rates, but things like focus schools are dependent upon what happens with other schools in the, in the state. So we don't know that information. And if you're interested in more information as we get updates, the arrow points to the Command Center on the Intranet, and we keep posting new information, updating it as it becomes available.
Thank you. If I could, we were supposed to begin our budget conversation at 3 o'clock, so we're almost 45 minutes over, just so everybody knows. Will there be, not that we wouldn't, we won't take questions now, we will, but to try to keep it short, is there another opportunity for the school board to take a look at this information and talk about it?
Yes, in fact, we could wait till after September, whatever date in September. We could put this on the September work session potentially for up-to-date when we've got the final information.
Okay, yeah, if, yes, Ms. Schultz definitely wants to ask a question, but after that, I mean, how do people feel, sort of a show of hands with maybe having a work session on this, putting it off until September, maybe today, asking clarifying questions if we just have a couple? Does that make sense? Okay. All right, go ahead, Mrs. Schultz.
So I just have, I think, two quick questions. One is on the refusal issue. What happens should, because there's stuff that catches traction. So what happens if the refusal rate gains traction? What happens to the individual kids who refuse? And then what happens if there's a refusal, traction, Twitter, something?
Okay. If, the school needs to inform the parent of what happens to the student score and whatever, there needs to be documentation. The student gets a zero for refusal, and the school gets a, that's counted as a zero when the accreditation and federal accountability information is calculated.
But I mean, nothing happens, I mean, the student's not prevented from progressing through?
No, only when you get to high school, when the student needs verified credits in order to graduate. You can't graduate without verified credits, you can't get a verified credit.
So I think something has to be prepared along those lines, like we need to communicate. You can refuse all you want until you get to high school, and then it matters. So I don't know what goes around, you know, language about warning people about refusing, like, okay, but in high school, you don't have that optionally.
I think there are consequences for the student. I certainly appreciate parents' right.
Right.
But at some point, they're going to have to take these kinds of assessments.
I just think that informed consent, like if you advise them upfront. And then the only other question I had was the paper and pencil assessment and then the low rate of the students with disabilities passing. You know, I just wonder sometimes if we don't force kids onto computer technology who may not be, that may not be the best way to test them. And I'm worried that, you know, we talk a lot about minority student achievement, but the students with disabilities, once again, is rock bottom. And whether or not anybody's ever taken the opportunity to assess whether, you know, having kids do this is necessarily the best way to test, you know, an individual student on an adult-sized computer, you know, if that's not their forte, it's just something to think about.
Okay. We do have a lot of procedures in place for both, both of the things that you, that you mentioned. I mean, we have forms that parents need to sign to acknowledge that they have been informed by the school as to the consequences for not participating in the SOL. And there are also, one of the accommodations, especially for our students with disabilities, is testing over multiple days. Testing over multiple days requires a paper and pencil test and-
I know, but they're still at the bottom. We haven't figured it out. They're still at 71%.
Yeah, the pass rate is still lower. Is there anything that you would add?
Okay, thank you, maybe that'll be for more conversation later. Mrs. Reed to be followed by Ms. Strauss and Mr. Stork.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all the information. I'll just ask a quick question now with the understanding we'll revisit this in September. The expedited retakes for grades three through eight, for whom does that require an extra workload?
This year, it required a lot of extra workload on our office for sure because the state, although they made that change, hadn't worked with Pearson, the testing vendor, in order to have the procedures in place to do it. So it was, we had lots of people in our office spending a lot of time on it. But I know it's much more important what the workload in the schools. There isn't an increased workload, but I think schools felt very positive about the fact that these students who were very close to passing, there was sufficient information in the, in the detailed performance by question information where they could sit those students down, provide them with some remediation prior to their taking the test. So schools felt that it was, I think for the most part, all that we heard was very positive that these students were then able to retake the test, and many of them, many of them came away feeling successful because they had, they had passed.
All of our schools should have intervention scheduled within captured time. But I will tell you when it first came out, because it was, it was implemented in a very aggressive way from the state, because that change was a very last-minute change. So I think initially, our elementary principals and middle school principals were like, oh gosh, I've got to figure out how I'm going to do this. But they utilized time they already had during the school day for enrichment and acceleration, remediation. And I think they overall have, I've heard the same thing as you, Kathy. Oh, this was not like I expected. This was a great opportunity for our schools and our students. You can imagine a student, this was the difference between many of our students leaving the end of whatever grade, thinking they didn't pass the exam versus they passed it now. And the level of confidence, I think, and just brokering kind of students feeling positive about school. So I think overall, our principals would tell you, although they were very trepidatious about it initially, I think it was a good thing.
Well, I guess I'll just put the marker down that I would hope that we can revisit the workload discussion also. There have been several topics today that we've talked about, and I guess it always makes you wonder, these are all good things that we're mentioning, but what's coming off the plate for the folks in the classroom? So, you know, another day, maybe we could take a look at that and just get an understanding for what their, their job responsibilities really are. And then another day too, I would like more information about the VG LA and just, you know, what's, what's happening with that, how we're using that. But that's not for today, so thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Strauss then, Mr. Stork.
Very quickly, since we don't get sort of the final word on this until September, I'm assuming that we have, what we have in place for Project Momentum is already there. We know we have the plans for that. And then the question is the federal issue with the focus, whether or not there are additional things that we need to do when we get the final scrubbed report in September.
There will be through Title I, yes, but that doesn't impact Project Momentum.
Okay.
So, but as Kathy said, it's going to be a little while before we get the priority or focus, because we kind of depended on the rest of the state's data, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Right, because that's, I mean, the expectations for us, for the schools, for the teachers, for the kids, or what have you. So we won't know until September? Will that be an onerous thing that has to be very quickly put in, or is it expected to-
I'm looking over at Betris Hoffman. She, come up to the mic, sorry.
Are we sort of prepared? I know that we've made a lot of plans for other things that are good for the schools that we know we could have difficulty.
So the state doesn't give out the official list and publicize that information until mid-September annually, but over the last few years, their practice has been to unofficially give notification in mid to late August as far as where they think schools are falling. So we have a sense of how many schools and which schools may be most at risk, and we can start some of that preliminary work to prepare the administration, the school staff. I think we're at a real advantage this year in that the schools that we internally anticipate to be most at risk are already included in Project Momentum.
Right, that was my assumption.
Yeah.
So that's fine, we go forward with-
Exactly. They have a strong support network in place, they have an accelerated school improvement timeline in place, they have support teams in place. So I believe we'll be in a very good place should the eventual, eventuality occur that we have new schools come into that status.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stork then, Mr. Belkow.
The predictive, the prediction for this coming result, this past school year was two or three times higher than what we're seeing, at least potentially is likely to be schools that are accredited with warning or at some sort of status. Any one, two, three that you see that's different? Obviously, the retakes are helping some, but what are the other elements of this? Because, I mean, this is so dramatically different than what I expected and frankly, what I was preparing myself for, that I'm obviously very pleased, but I just, I have to understand what, what happened. This way, what happened positively, of course, but what happened?
I would say the expedited retakes were probably the number one difference this year from what, from the earlier set of predictions, because we did have a prediction of about 40 schools that we thought-
Yes, exactly.
-were going to be accredited with warning. The use of the four-year average instead of the three-year average took about eight schools off of the list. So between that and the expedited retakes, I think that was the primary. And plus, the, all the work, we based our predictions on what schools had done the previous year, right? I mean, that's all we had.
Yeah.
And I think the schools were making some real efforts as well that paid off.
I would also have to say, I have to give credit also to our support teams, and those support teams are not just instructional services. It was, you know, really thoughtful strategy of providing support to the schools. It was the same team, it was out all the time and working with our schools, making sure that they were, you know, had a good plan in place, they were implementing the plan, they were monitoring student progress. So I would tell you, there was a lot of, if you talk to the schools that made significant progress, they'll tell you the support teams helped them a lot. And I think some of them presented on our here for one of our previous work sessions.
And I would, I would urge you to, when we get to that conclusion point, to please share your assessment analysis of that, because I think we don't always kind of congratulate and, yeah, acknowledge when we have done things better than expected. We sometimes go the other way, and I want to make sure that we don't miss the boat on this one. Because I think, I deeply believe the prediction was a real concern when it was, was that six months ago? I don't know, it seemed like it was a good while ago, but I, obviously, it was-
I believe so, yes.
But, I mean, so I think, let's, please make sure we-
And I'm glad we did that, because that prompted a change.
Absolutely, I'm glad you did that.
Although it wasn't exactly the change, some of the changes we had hoped for, it was, it helped all school systems across the state, which, I'm not sure that, I'm sure they would have done something at the end, but I certainly think it prompted the conversation and the, you know, at least one of the solutions that were put into place.
I think it helped them to come up with a solution earlier, the solution they did come up with, I think they came up with earlier.
Two weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
So I would say, well done, Dr. Garza and team, because that letter got me focused, and obviously, and your point now is that it got a lot of other people focused too about what do we need to do differently. And I'm sure principals themselves, seeing their name on the preliminary list, obviously helps them to focus themselves and the teachers and the folks in the school do that as well. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Belkow.
So I wonder if you could all help me analyze one piece of data. I think it's on Slide 11 about the number of tests. So it looks like we gave about 360,000 tests, and we have about, I know it's more, 180,000 students. So approximately, on average, that means we have, we're giving two tests for every student on average. Is that, am I right so far, right? But then I also know that not every student is taking a test. So that means that the number of tests taken by students typically is, on average, greater than two. So what would be really interesting would be a bar graph that shows by number of tests taken per individual. So if I, in other words, the tally of the number of students, say, that are taking five tests, the tally of the number of tests that are taking four, three, whatever. I think it would be a very interesting bar graph that would be illuminating to us, the public, and the state legislature.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing nothing else? Thank you all very much. Okay, next up, I don't think we have any next steps, but I'm not sure. Just schedule it in September, right? And then, and follow up-
And, and I was remiss, because I just want to say, Kathy Oliver and her team, you ask anyone throughout our- you ask anyone throughout our system, they will say they are go-to people. And there's a lot of confidence and respect for the work that you all do. So thank you very much. You're the best in the state. We're so glad you're here.
Mr. Belkoff, were you, did you want that as a next step?
I would like that as a next step, if the board agrees.
Yeah, let's be specific, then. You'd like to see how many students are taking five tests a year? Okay, so how many, right. So students taking five tests, how many? Right, okay. Can we, just a bar, bar graph, number of tests, number of kids taking in a year? Okay, basically, yes. So all stu-, right. So on, on one axis is number of tests. The other axis is number of students. Oh, SOL tests. State tests, sorry.
SOL.
SOL tests.
So that's not going to be all students, but we.
Okay. Okay, if it's a lot of work, get back to us, okay? But that's, all right, thank you. Okay, next is budget. Why don't we take a two-minute break? Okay, and be back here at 4:03.